Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 1st meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call.
Council members Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatrian.
Here. As you may be aware, we have on the agenda today proclaiming the month of April as Armenian Heritage Month. And after the flag salute, I have invited the Western Diocese and the Western Prelacy of the Armenian Church. We have with us Reverend Fathers Zaven Margosian from the Diocese and Reverend Father Mofse Shanakian from the Prelacy, who will do the invocation for this meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we offer you thanks and praise for granting us this day to join our dear friends at the city of Glendale. We thank our elected officials for faithfully and courageously serving our community for human rights, dignity, and justice. May you bless them with many years of health and continued success in their meritorious service to the prosperity of this great city we are all proud to call our home. God of life, your spirit hovers over all existence, bringing life out of nothingness, beauty out of ashes, and resurrection life from the depths of earth. Grant us the vigor to continue our path undeterred and the strength to overcome obstacles and accomplish our ultimate goals. Grant wisdom to the world leaders and to us so that we may all, all times, think, speak, and do that which is good and just in your eyes. As we enter the month of April, the Armenian Heritage Month, we thank you for your abundant blessings and gifts of love and mercy. Heavenly Fathers, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray that we seek your advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act based upon your wisdom. Guide us, Lord, and we place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that you may direct us. We pray for humanitarian aid and rebuilding where destruction has occurred. We pray for peace, for justice in our homes and in our city streets. We pray for end of violence, war, and death. Grant us this peaceful God. Amen.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today grateful for the privilege to serve the city of Glendale and its vibrant community. As we commence a month-long celebration of the Armenian cultural heritage, we honor the rich history, culture, and contributions of our Armenian residents. We remember also plight of a people who experienced genocide last century and have witnessed a continuation of those atrocities as they have been exiled from their historic homeland of Nagorno-Garabakh, that is, Artsakh, in 2020 and 2023. We raise our voice in prayer today and ask that this council be guided by wisdom and compassion as we deliberate and make decisions for the well-being of all of our citizens. May we always seek justice, equity, and harmony in our endeavors. Bless this meeting and bless the people of Glendale. May the spirit of unity and respect prevail in all that we do. Amen.
Thank you. Next.
The agenda for the April 1st, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on March 28th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And what's next?
Three presentations and appointments, three A. There will be, there will not be a regular meeting on April 8th, 2025. The next regular meeting will be on April 15th, 2025.
Next.
Next would be item number B, proclamation designated April 2025 as Armenian Heritage Month.
Thank you, and we have with us, aside from the two Reverend Fathers, Mehran Khachadurian, who's a committee member with the city of Glendale, as well as Karik Ingado Khanjan, co-chair of the AGC along with several members from the committee, including ANCA and ACA. If I can have all of you please come up. I'll read, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll read parts of the proclamation and then you'll have an opportunity to say a few words. But whereas the city of Glendale is proud to be home to the largest Armenian population outside of Armenia, a community whose histories, resilience, and culture are deeply woven into the fabric of our city and whose presence has profoundly shaped Glendale's identity and growth. Whereas the Armenian people have endured oppression, genocide, and exile, yet have always risen, preserving a civilization rich in language, music, art, architecture, and faith. Their survival is the triumphs of human will and cultural endurance. Whereas April marks one of the darkest chapters in Armenian and world history, the Armenian genocide of 1915, in which the Ottoman Empire carried out a systemic extermination of 1.5 million Armenians. This atrocity not only sought to erase a people, but to annihilate their heritage, memory, and future. Turkey's and the world's failure to fully recognize and condemn this crime allowed the seeds of future genocides to take root. Whereas history continues to repeat itself, in 2020, Azerbaijan, with direct military and political support from Turkey, launched an unprovoked attack on the Republic of Artsakh and Armenia, targeting civilian areas, cultural monuments, and sacred sites. Thousands of lives were lost, and Armenian families were once again forced to flee from their ancestral homeland. And whereas in 2023, this aggression escalated further when over 120 indigenous Armenians were forcibly displayed from Artsakh following a month-long blockade and a military offensive that amounted to genocide and ethnic cleansing. To this day, Armenian prisoners of war remain unlawfully detained by Azerbaijan, subjected to torture, humiliation, and denied their most basic human rights. The continued captivity of these POWs is a gross violation of international law and affront to justice and humanity. Whereas we urge the US government to use every measure available to secure the immediate and unconditional release of these prisoners and to hold Azerbaijan and Turkey accountable for its violations of international law and war crimes. Whereas in Glendale, Armenian Americans are a cornerstone of our civic life, educators, business owners, artists, first responders, public servants, doctors, engineers, faith leaders, and advocates for justice. Their culture, values, and work ethic have elevated our city, and their pursuit of justice and dignity continues to inspire us all. Whereas it is not only a privilege, but also our duty to honor Armenian heritage, not just as a cultural observance, but as a moral stand. As a city that values truth, justice, and human rights, Glendale stands in solidarity with the Armenian people and their ongoing struggle for recognition, reparations, peace, freedom, and to be able to live on their own ancestral lands. Now therefore I, Ellen Asatrian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, do proclaim April 2025 as Armenian genocide remembrance and Armenian Heritage Month in the city of Glendale and urge all residents to stand with the Armenian people in remembrance, in resistance, and in celebration, honoring the legacy of their ancestors, supporting the rights of those suffering today, and ensuring that future generations continue to rise above adversity, thriving with resilience, strength, and the unwavering spirit of progress. Sorry, it was long. There's more to it, but thank you for being here and thank you for your work. If you have an opportunity, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you very much. My name is Gary Kajin. I'm the co-chair of Armenian National Committee, I'm sorry, Armenian Genocide Committee. I'm on so many committees, I get confused. And I'm humbled and honored and grateful to the city of Glendale for acknowledgement and recognition of this honor to the Armenian genocide and to the Armenian community. We are very proud to be a part of this great city as a community, part of the community. And thank you for everybody, to the city council, city departments, and the whole city employees that they are making this city a great city to live to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Likewise, likewise, thank you, Mayor, and distinguished council members. I would just like to, I don't want to repeat the same things. Thank you so much. I just want to add to it. We have April 24 coming up, and we want to invite each council member to attend our events, which will be at 10:00 AM in the morning in Montebello to place the flowers and for a religious ceremony. And then at 5:30 PM, there will be another event which will be held at, wait here, at the City Hall. It's called Demand for Justice Community Rally. That's 5:30. All of you guys are welcome to participate, and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could mention that in coordination with the number of the events that are happening in the community, the city has tried to coordinate its own events so as there is not conflict between other community events and rallies and other occasions for people to gather and remember the martyrs of the Armenian genocide. So the city's commemoration, which normally would take place on April 24th, will actually be taking place on Monday evening, April 21st, 2025, starting at 6:00 PM at the Alex Theater. And I'll feature a number of performances that help remind people that not only the Armenian people have suffered, but we are here today. We have survived. It is a thriving community, and it is a nation that will not be erased. So again, you can see the flyer on the screen as well as the performances. And I want to thank the members of the Armenian community that were here to accept your proclamation.
Councilman Kasakian, we thank you for that adjustment that you have done. It is a great ease for everybody that is going to attend on April 24th for the event. So we thank you for.
I wish I could take the credit, but we have a committee who agreed to it.
But it's a great, it's a great adjustment.
And the mayor and a number of other folks, but you're welcome.
Thank you very much for the adjustment.
Thank you.
I will note that unfortunately, I will be missing the event on the 21st. I'll be up in Sacramento for the Armenian Advocacy Day, and I've been invited to join the state ceremony in recognition of the Armenian genocide.
Just a few words?
Yes, please.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mayor, for this proclamation. We are all descendants of the survivors of the Armenian genocide. And I often talked about, talked about it with my grandfather, who was a survivor. And I was asked, how is it that we survived after all that happened to us? The genocide, the forced deportation. And he said, every country that we went to or we were sent to, we started a community first, a small community. We integrated. Then we started our churches, started building our churches. Then we started building our schools. Then our clubs, sports clubs, and cultural clubs. And if you look at Glendale today, after so many, after over a century, we have done the same thing here. Our clergy is here today, our community is here today, our school. Shamilian was here like a couple of weeks ago, and also our Ottoman Men and Armenian Society of Los Angeles, and all these clubs that were created by the members of the community, and 99.5% of them are run by volunteers. And that's how we survived, and Turkey failed, and they will fail again. And I get emotional about it, but I think we have a duty to our community to continue to keep our heritage and culture going and also be cognizant of the fact that what's going on in Armenia, because without any, without the motherland, no, no culture, no race will survive. So with that, I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mayor, thank you for all the part summation. Thank you very much.
All right. Food Waste Prevention Week.
Next item is proclamation designated the week of April 7 through 13, 2025, as Food Waste Prevention Week.
And we have Dr. Czolér Okuyan, Dean of Student Affairs at Glendale Community College. Welcome. Just going to read short bits. Whereas the city of Glendale, in accordance with Senate Bill 1383, acknowledges that food waste is a global problem that has significant social, economic, and environmental repercussions. Whereas organics, recycles, recycling also helps create valuable compost that can enrich our soil, reduce the need for synthetic fertilizers. Now therefore I, Ellen Asatrian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim April 7 through April 13, 2025, as Food Waste Prevention Week and urge all businesses, organizations, and residents to join in the effort to prevent food waste and participate in edible food recovery programs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. On behalf of Glendale Community College and our GCC Cares Program, our Basic Needs Program, I'm honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing the district's work during the Food Waste Prevention Week. GCC is deeply committed to supporting our students' basic needs, especially with access to nutritious food, while also tackling food waste head-on through our GCC Cares Program at our Verdugo and Garfield campus. Through our partnerships with Los Angeles Regional Food Bank and companies like Trader Joe's, we rescue and redistribute thousands of pounds of food each week that would otherwise go to waste. We're incredibly grateful for our partnership with the city and for your support in students' basic needs challenges. It was the city council that approved Critical Community Development Block Grant that helped our pantries during the pandemic in our communities. And the council's investment in $1.3 million in low-income student rental assistance program, which has helped students and their families facing housing insecurity. Our collaborative partnership and these resources have truly made a significant impact in the lives of our students. So we're proud to be part of the city that values these efforts and are grateful for your recognition this evening.
Thank you. I would actually like to note, after the meeting that we had with Shamilian, I had an opportunity to connect with the principal and some of the staff. And this is something that I had raised at least last year and the year before in coordinating with our schools, because I do think the best way to teach and encourage recycling is through students and the youth, because the youth end up going home and teaching their family members and their parents. Mr. Golanyan, Shamilian wants to do a program with Public Works, where I had talked about this with our public schools, but they're really excited and want to partner with Public Works in whether it's visiting the landfill and then the recycling center or the recycling center for the students to learn, you know, how to separate organics and all of that. And so if we can provide a staff member that I can put them in contact with, I think this will be a great kickstart. And I don't know if any conversations have been had with GUSD, but this is a great example of schools and the city partnering together to help.
Mayor Asatrian, representatives from Integrated Waste Management just stepped up. If you wanted to hear what they have been able to do to date, and they heard from you, and they will move forward with coordinating with Shamilian School as well.
Do you have any updates with the schools with respect to us maybe coordinating field trips and educational opportunities for our local students?
That's an easy, that's an easy fix, yes. We haven't started the conversation yet, but with your directive, we'll be happy to get the ball rolling. We have a lot of changes that are looking forward to at the recycling center, so that we'll be conversing and moving that ball forward for sure. We do have a short video summary on the whole edible food recovery program, which I want to mention because it has been recognized across the state. In fact, I'm speaking at the Western Regional Symposium last, next week about the strides that the city of Glendale has made in that area. It's something that even with my meeting with Cal Recycle this afternoon, they're very proud of the work that we've done here collectively.
Thank you. And I'll pass on the information of the staff member at the school. You wanted to say something?
Yeah, well, I was gonna, you know, it's completely coincidental, but I happened to this morning, I happened to send an email this morning to Mr. Hernandez because I had been told that GUSD is working on something with Public Works. And I'm looking at an email I got to highlight their food waste reduction efforts. I guess they're, they're doing some things, and I've heard about some of it and some of it I don't know about. So I actually sent a message saying, what exactly are we doing with GUSD? So maybe some future date, we can get an update on what we're doing. Because if we're talking about trying to, you know, develop these habits among the younger people, you know, we've got the school district, we've got the college, Shamilian, maybe some other private schools. But, you know, I'd like to know what we're doing and how we can help them with, I guess, what they're trying to accomplish.
Yes, we certainly can. We, as I said, we had our first meeting with Cal Recycle this afternoon, and that was one area that we need to connect the dots, you know, with regards to what we do, what we do with the franchise haulers, what we do with the edible food recovery program. So there's a lot of moving parts that are kind of in the background. Nobody sees them, but the accomplishments we've made in 2023, for example, we diverted through these programs that, that we were referring to earlier on, we diverted 163,000 pounds in 2023. In 2024, it was 452,000 pounds. All this food is being redirected invisibly. The community doesn't see it, but it's moving. There's a lot of people that are involved in the background, moving this material and saying, we've got to do something better than landfilling it. And that is really built on the bedrock that was established with the franchise program, with the funding that was in place, with the individuals that we hired to recreate collaborative, to really coordinate all of this, all of the moving parts through the edible food recovery program. GUSD is another player that we have to fix into the equation.
Okay. Well, I would, at some point, yeah, would like to hear back about, because they say we're working with them. I'd like to know exactly what that work entails, how far along that is, et cetera. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Come on. My turn.
Mayor, the next item is item number D, proclamation designating April 6 through the 12, 2025 as National Library Week.
All right, and we have our newest Library and Arts and Culture Director, Lasa Pelado Lozada, as well as from our Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust, Joanne Zierhut, who is the president. I see some other folks. Welcome. You want to say a few words before I read off? Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead. Are you sure? Okay.
Thank you.
Whereas the Library, Library Arts and Culture Department will celebrate National Library Week, April 6 through 12. Whereas libraries serve as a vibrant community hub, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning with access to computers, Wi-Fi, and literacy services. Whereas libraries empower their community and play a pivotal role in economic development, providing access to resources, training, and opportunities such as LinkedIn Learning, and that support job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses. Whereas our society demonstrates its commitment to our libraries by contributing to the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust. On Thursday, April 10, 2025, take action for Libraries Day, a day to rally advocates to support libraries. Now therefore I, Ellen Asatrian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 6 through 12, 2025, as National Library Week in Glendale, California. Sorry, these are written really small and I can barely read them today, so, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Asatrian, council members, staff, and community members. I'm very excited to be here to honor my favorite week of the year, if I may say so, National Library Week. You have, all have heard me speak passionately about how much I love libraries and how awesome I think our staff are, as well as our over 600,000 visitors a year and 95,000 cardholders. So I think it's important to hear from our community leaders who support us and advocate for us on a daily basis. So I'm going to turn it over to Jones here.
Good evening, Mayor Asatrian, City Council members and, or council members and city staff. I'm Jones Zierhut, President of Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust. The trust plays a pivotal, pivotal role in supporting the Library Arts and Culture Department by raising essential funds that enhance the programs and resources offered to the community in Glendale's eight library branches. The trust funds directly impact programs and services that Glendale residents have come to know and rely on each year from their libraries, such as the Summer Reading Program, when every June, the library launches its annual Summer Reading Program with all ages programming, reading challenges, and activities. Summer Reading helps alleviate what's referred to as the Summer Slide by drawing children and teens toward reading into, with incentives to keep them turning pages and coming to library programs throughout the summer months. This is one of the largest programs this library puts on annually, and the trust funds bring performers such as dancers, musicians, scientists, wildlife experts, puppetry, and more to our branches. I am proud to report that last summer, our community logged over 250,000 minutes of reading throughout the summer. We also support the Reflect Space Gallery, which is a gallery space located inside Central Library that is designed for exploration and reflection on human rights and violations against those rights. Reflect Space's openings welcome a diverse array of community members and attract a wide audience from greater Los Angeles, elevating the arts in Glendale and inviting new faces into our libraries, receiving widespread press and attention from world-renowned artists and publications. Another space that we support is the Maker Space, where people can come in and use our sewing machines, 3D printers, computers with creative software, drafting tablets, jewelry making supplies, a cricket cutting machine, painting drawing supplies, crafting materials, and a memory lab where you can transfer VHS cassettes, negative slides, super eight frames, photos, vinyl records, and audio cassettes, and other CDs into digital format. Lastly, I want to mention that we help fund our new bookmobile. The trust has, was solely, the trust has and will solely fund all of the books totaling about 900 titles. These books are being checked out at local parks all around our city. During my nine years serving Glendale's libraries as a board member, I have come to really understand that libraries are much more than just buildings filled with books. They are vital community hubs that serve people of all ages and backgrounds. They offer a safe and welcoming environment where individuals can explore new ideas, participate in educational programs, and engage with others. Libraries provide free access to books, technology, and resources that many might not otherwise be able to afford, particularly in underserved areas. I personally will never forget coming to pick up mail at the Central Library during the pandemic and seeing so many people in our community sitting around the building, using the Wi-Fi, resting in the shade, having access to water to drink, and a place to wash their hands. Makes me so proud to be a part of what's, makes me so proud to be a part of making this happen through the trust. Everyone can become involved with the work we do for our libraries at the trust, learn more about us, and provide, and become involved by visiting GLACT.org. Thank you.
Thank you. By giving it to you or?
Give it to Joe. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Mayor, next item is consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor, I have no cards.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Madam Mayor, just briefly, there was a substitute motion on the Senator Hader, so that's for you to know. And then also for Councilman Najarian and Mayor Asatrian on the, this item, just you can note your vote as an abstention, given your previous recusals.
So do we have to take that one separately?
No, you could just vote yes, and note an abstention for the...
So I'm noting an abstention now?
Four F.
Four F, okay.
Okay.
Do we have motion? I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Who's moving second? Yeah.
And I seconded that.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Krasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes, noting abstention on four F.
And Mayor Asatrian?
Yes, noting an abstention on four F.
Madam Mayor, I know that we skipped over appointments, but seeing as today is the last day, can we go back in the agenda to, I think a number of us have appointments and nominations?
All right, okay.
Should I go first?
No, you go ahead, and then I'll fill in.
All right.
Okay. So for CDBG Commission with Councilmember Brotman, I'd like to nominate Leah Awney. For, I have one, two, three, four, five nominations with Mayor Asatrian for Design Review Board, Joseph Kascanian. For GWP Commission, Varujan Avedyan. For Audit Committee, Jack Mavian. For Sustainability Commission, Shont Chakarian. And with Councilmember Krasakian, I have for Arts and Culture Commission, Marat Hayrapetian. For Historic Preservation Commission, Alan Durham. For CDBG Commission, Armin Avedisian.
All right.
I have, I have one, along with Councilmember Garpetian, we'd like to nominate Paul Garpetian.
No, no. No, 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 Mr. Karthunian, because Mr. Garpetian is on...
I was gonna, I was gonna say that although there's no restriction on serving on the Charter Review and the sustainability, there is a time conflict. Are those times set in stone? If they are set in stone and there is a conflict, I would like to name a backup to Haik Karthunian, as Haik Karthunian, does that make sense?
Correct. So the regular meeting schedules for both of those commissions are...
Exactly the same time?
Right, so the Charter Review Committee meets at the first Thursday of the month at 5:00 PM, and what's that one, Sustainability? Meets at six, 5:30 at, on the first and third, or no, just the first as well.
So if you're telling me that's an impossibility to be in two places at once, then I'll withdraw Mr. Garpetian and Karapetian.
Yeah, no relations. No relations.
And replace him with Haik Karthunian, who's already on Sustainability and has served admirably, at least for four years.
All right. Councilmember Kar...
Oh, you haven't? Then, okay.
Krasakian?
Yeah. So Arts and Culture with the nominating panel, that I'm on is with Councilmember Najarian, and we will renominate Savannah Zadorian, who's already on there, correct? If I'm, if I miss any of these, because there's a lot of, flying out, please, my colleagues can jump in and correct me. On Audit, the panel is myself and the mayor, Ellen Asatrian, nominating Denise Miller. For Building and Fire, and this is with Mayor Asatrian, we will be nominating Mr. R. Stefanian. Huh? R. Stefanian? Then we have for Commission on the Status of Women, we have nomination panel with Councilmembers Garpetian, we will be nominating Romella Markarian, and with Councilmember Najarian, we will be nominating Ms. Sedah Hojayan. For Community Development Block Grant, nominating Armin Kavadisian. This is a panel with myself and Councilmember Garpetian. And with Councilmember Najarian, we will be nominating Anita Quinones Gabrielian. Both of them currently are on the CDBG, so there'll be continuity there. A number of these are individuals who've already been serving for some time. For Design Review Board, as you can tell, a lot of these are mine, because I waited till the last minute, cramming for a final. So for Design Review Board, the panel is myself and Councilmember Brotman, Danielle Lockerliff?
Lockerriff.
Lockerriff. And for the panel with Mayor Asatrian, it's Isabella Boyadian, who teaches architecture at Glendale Community College. Glendale, and she actually had served on DRB before. For Glendale Water and Power, Council, Mayor Asatrian and I will be nominating Zankor Minian. You did mention Councilmember Garpetian, Historical Preservation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Alan Durham. And we have for Historical Preservation with Councilmember Najarian, Lisa Kusik. Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission, we, Councilmember Garpetian and I are nominating Mr. Henrik Sardabegian, who's currently on there. And Councilmembers Najarian and I are nominating Mr. Zaria Amirian. Planning Commission with, for Parks, for Parks, yeah. Community Services, Parks, Recreation Commission. For Planning Commission, it'll be, the panel is myself and Mayor Asatrian, nominating Mr. Alan Malikian. Sustainability Commission, Councilmember Asatrian and I will be nominating Ms. Rondi Warner. And Councilmember Brotman and I are nominating Cole Basemore. Transportation and Parking Commissioner, Commission, and you mentioned that one already?
No.
Okay. We, and we have him here, actually, I thought he was here with us earlier. But we are nominating Councilmember Garpetian and I, Mr. Andre Ordebegian, and with Councilmember Najarian, renominating Shawna Bonston. Both of them actually were on, I think, believe Mr. Ordebegian is currently on there, and Ms. Bonston up until the last meeting was on there. And that is the entirety of it. Thank you, done. All right.
Can I go?
Yes.
You gonna review the tape?
I have it written down in case staff wants to know.
Okay. Well, I have, I think I only have one that hasn't been mentioned, and that's with Councilmember Najarian on a panel. For the DRB, we have Chris Welch. Yeah, the others have been mentioned. Is this general council comments? Should I do other things, or we're not there yet?
No, not, we're not there yet. Councilmember Najarian and I are also appointing Inesa Vartan to the Arts and Culture Commission. And that's that. Well...
Is that everything? Is there...
No, we, Councilmember Brotman and I, I think, have...
Have one, that's it?
I think.
Okay. You're gonna throw it to the...
Okay.
There you go. Next.
It'll be a long agenda, a lot of paper will be printed next week. Is this now portion for staff comments?
Yes.
Correct. City Council and staff comments.
All right, who would like to go first?
Madam Mayor, I'll just briefly say that it's, it's never something that we like to do here, but it is important that we do it nevertheless, and that is recognizing exceptional members of their community whose lives have been taken from us too soon. Many in the community may have heard about the tragic accident that happened in Europe, in Lithuania, with four service members initially being lost, and with three of the bodies of those service members having been recovered. And one of those individuals was a son of Glendale. So this evening, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Sergeant Edwin F. Franco. Before we adjourn, or before we get to the end of the meeting, when we adjourn, I would like to take a moment to honor the life and service of Sergeant Edwin Franco, a proud son of Glendale, who was among our US service members, as mentioned, who lost their lives in a training exercise accident in Lithuania. At just 25 years old, Sergeant Franco had already served over six years in the US Army with distinction and dedication. An M1 Abrams Tank Systems Operator with the 3rd Infantry Division, Sergeant Franco had completed deployments in Korea and Germany, and was known by his fellow soldiers for his leadership, humility, and unwavering spirit. He received multiple commendations, including the Army Commendation Medal with Oak Leaf Cluster and the Army Achievement Medal with Oak Leaf Cluster. Sergeant Franco's commanding officer described him as a leader who never asked more of his team than he was willing to give himself, a true reflection of character and courage. He was stationed in Georgia and is survived by his wife and child. The two met in 2022 and welcomed their first child in October. And tonight, we mourn alongside his family, friends, and fellow service members. We honor his legacy, his sacrifice, and memory. Our hearts are with the families of all the four soldiers lost in this tragic accident, and we offer our deepest gratitude to those who serve and protect our nation every day. May he rest in peace, may his soul be illuminated in heaven, and may we also forever remember those who perished with him. Private First Class Dante Di Titano, Sergeant Jose Duenez Jr., and a fourth fallen soldier whose name has yet to be publicly released, all of whom gave their lives in service of this country.
Thank you, Mr. Krasakian. And our deepest condolences to the family and all their loved ones, and thank you for your sacrifice. All right. Anyone else have comments?
I do. Hard to follow that, but, yes, I have, well, I have just one thing, actually, and that is I would like for council to reconsider an item that came before us several months ago, was voted down. I was in the majority of the no vote. I would like to have it reconsidered, and that is the question of staff support for council members. I would suggest that we put that discussion together with our budget study session so that we can incorporate any decisions we make and the costs of any people we bring on board into, into our budgeting for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Staffing for council members.
Oh, staffing.
Anyone else with comments?
Yes. So, as, as you know, that I serve on the Metro Board, and I represent 13...
those who perished with him. Private First Class Dante Di Titano, Sergeant Jose Duenez Jr., and a fourth fallen soldier whose name has yet to be publicly released, all of whom gave their lives and service of this country.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. And our deepest condolences to the family and all their loved ones. And thank you for your sacrifice.
I do. Hard to follow that. But yes, I have, well, I have just one thing, actually. And that is, I would like for council to reconsider an item that came before us several months ago, was voted down. I was in the majority of the no vote. I would like to have it reconsidered, and that is the question of staff support for council members. I would suggest that we put that discussion together with our budget study session so that we can incorporate any decisions we make and the costs of any people we bring on board into, into our budgeting for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Staffing for council members.
Oh, staffing.
Anyone else with comments?
Yes. So, as, as you know, that I serve on the Metro Board, and I represent 13 cities. Usually I, well, annually, sometimes semi-annually, I meet with the council members of those cities, as well as the city manager, to learn what their preferences would be and what sort of funding opportunities in transportation that they look for. So I hear from them, and I take that to the Metro Board. And unfortunately, I haven't really done that with the Glendale Council. Perhaps I've taken your desires for granted. Perhaps you've taken my efforts for granted. So I'd like to have a regular discussion with the council on what items you'd like me to go to the Metro Board and bring in millions of dollars into the city with. One of them, for instance, last week, I got an email from our Public Works Director indicating that he'd like to get the Glendale Beeline into the eligible operator funding pool, which means that we would be receiving money for the operations of the Beeline bus. I started to work on that, and I realized, well, wait a minute, I'm not sure that's where council is at. So I understand that is going to be on the agenda in the near future.
April 15th.
So council can discuss that. And let me know if that's the sort of thing that you're interested in me pursuing at the Metro Board, to bring in a lot of money, huge, a huge amount of money, to the city of Glendale. Others, for example, are like the Ciclavia. I never asked Glendale if you guys wanted the Ciclavia. This is something I on my own assumed that it was an interest and went and helped get funding for that. So I don't want to do that anymore. I want to hear from you. And let me know what you're interested in, and I'll do my darndest to get that funding from Metro for the projects that you deem worthy.
Thank you. I think it would be very helpful if we can have some sort of list from staff as well during these discussions of what they find priority and what's on our list. Where, I think it'd be nice to have more of a guided discussion.
Yeah, typically, it's a list that the other cities go through, and there's different categories.
Just done during a public session with all the council members, or?
They discuss it amongst themselves on their council time, and then they come to me with meetings and discussion.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Yes.
Just a couple of events that I attended in the last couple of weeks. One was the event to commemorate and celebrate the legacy of Cesar Chavez, a dedicated leader in civil rights and labor equality. It was at the Pacific Center. Very fun event. Good food, good music, good people. Glendale Latino Association were there. And they had the first, not first, they had the all-female mariachi band that they won several championships. Also, I also attended the Seroptimist International Glendale Luncheon. And that was very near and dear to my heart because they, they raised funds to help women that were in, in need of some sort of funding to continue their education, housing, and what have you. These are battered women that they needed help. And it was great to be there, and I try to attend almost every year. So with that, that's it, Madam Mayor, for today.
Councilmember Kasakian, did you have more?
Yes.
Yes.
I do want to mention a couple of things. One of them is, and I'm sure we've all had similar conversations when we go up to Montrose and talk to the merchants. There was a complaint that was raised, and I believe it's a valid one regarding the trash cans that are in use there. They don't have lining. It's just a container. And when the trash goes into it, you know, it's, I don't want to go into the details of how messy it can get and how odorous it is. But if there's a way to improve upon this, so it doesn't become hazard that's attracting vermin, and also taking away from the nice pedestrian inviting atmosphere of Montrose Shopping Park, that would be great. So again, it's regarding the trash containers. And if anyone has questions, please, if staff has questions, the Montrose Shopping Park Association Board, I'm sure, will be able to give you more details. And then there's also the issue of parklets and fees charged to it. And I will ask staff to give us more information on that. Doesn't need to come to staff, or doesn't need to come to council for a report. But that's, those are the two items. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of housekeeping items. One is, I think it was almost a year ago, I had brought up the Tati Campapi, the, for us to put out an RFP. I thought that was gonna happen, but I think it's been over a year. If I'm not mistaken, I haven't seen anything, if I can get a, some sort of timeline. They were supposed to commission some artwork for Artsakh Street. And I think as I was thinking through this, it would be really nice to, as you're looking for the beautification project, for there be, to also have some sort of QR code or, you know, informational on Artsakh, and maybe even tying it to Martuni, our sister city. But city manager, if you can get some updates on where we're at with the RFP, that'd be nice. The, want to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the State of the City last week, as well as our staff, who put together the Sister Cities kickoff. Looking forward to seeing the applications and for us to create committees. But if you are interested in serving on any of the Sister City committees, you can go to glandalcia.gov backslash Sister Cities and sign up there, and staff will get in touch with you. The third is, I've been approached by the groups that are hosting the Kids Festival, had encouraged Mr. Stepan Partamian, who hosts the Wine Festival, to bring it to Glendale, the Water Festival that's taking place. I know last time I had brought this forth, we only voted on the nonprofit portion of events, and there was supposed to be.
Permit fees.
Permit fees. And what I noted when I brought that, when you guys brought that, I thought there was going to be a second item that was supposed to come in December that we still haven't seen. There was supposed to be a follow-up to that. But the larger issue is not just with those that are not nonprofit. Some of these don't fall into the nonprofit, but they are organizing very big events that are free to the public. And so I see these, again, as opportunities for, not just fun things for our residents to do, but opportunities for revenue and indirect revenue source for our small businesses. Some of these will have thousands of people that are attending. And again, I'm looking for ways that we can support them. You know, I would picture that if our parks and rec staff were, you know, organizing something like this, what the cost would that, would be to the city, and how these partnerships could help bring and keep these events in our city, and how we can support them in making sure they're successful. But I've received complaint over complaint that the fees are high, and looking for partnerships with the city. So for us to, please take a look. Thank you. And then I think along those lines, I had a meeting with Miles from the Alex Theater. He submitted a proposal for doing some programming around 100 years of the Alex Theater. I would love for the city of Glendale to take part in the committee that they're forming, and for us to also coordinate and collaborate with them on programming. It shouldn't just be their group organizing it, but something as part of the city as well. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you. All right. Next.
Item number six, Community Event Announcement, three-minute portion, five-speaker limit. Per mayor policy, this item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications. Subject to three minutes. Timelink discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. I have two cards here. First one is Tony Passarella. Second one is Mr. Mohill.
Good evening, Council. Tony Passarella. Ellen, this one's for you. Arm, could you please play that video?
Trying to get it up, Tony. Give me a second.
Please listen to me. It's important. This video is entitled, "The Heartbeat of Life." This is a baby in the womb at 10 weeks. A detectable heartbeat can occur in five weeks. Ellen Asatrian condones terminating that life. And if she had her way, she wants expanded family leave for Glendale city employees who want abortions. I assume that's with full pay. Correct me if I'm wrong. In some cases, abortions can take three to four days to complete, and in severe cases, could lay up a woman for several weeks. There are two types of abortions, chemical and surgical. That could cost anywhere from $500 to $2,000. And they are horrific. I will spare you the details. Here are the risks to Glendale employees, or anyone for that matter, considering abortion. Abdominal pain, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, headache, uterine perforation, cervical laceration, infection, possible damage to bowel or bladder, bleeding, and in some cases, severe bleeding that could last several weeks, maternal death. Instead of risking those serious life-threatening complications, how about first sending the employees to Avenue's Pregnancy Clinic, where ultrasound, the clinic can give the ultrasound to the woman, and she can see or hear the heartbeat that is detectable at five weeks, the majority of women, and I just confirmed that with a Avenue's person today, chooses life. A woman's right to choose, Mrs. Asatrian, I get that. I get that. But my response is, choose what is right. Give the baby life. In closing, I want to say Almighty God is not pleased with anyone who condones or has any part in terminating what he is creating, a human life in this case. Judgment Day is coming. May God have mercy on your soul, Mrs. Asatrian.
Next is Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I wasn't going to speak this evening on oral communication, but as I walked in, a woman who you may know, and who comes to council quite often, talked about the Women's Commission. And she says to you, you know, Mike, there are many private companies, private organizations, excuse me, who do the same thing that the Glendale Women's Commission. Why do we need to spend about $200,000 for the Women's Commission? The Seroptimist Club, that's a women's organization. You know, women are very successful in the city of Glendale. Councilman Vartan Garpetian gave us a list last week of all the successes of women in Glendale compared, compared to LA County, in fact. So women in Glendale are doing very well. So why do we need a commission for women in Glendale? Also, why do we need a Arts and Culture Commission or Sustainability Commission? There are private organizations that do the same function. Save us $200,000, please, and let us buy, hire some cops. Councilman Art Kasakian says that the police department needs, wants to hire about 23 cops. And they're looking to find money to do it. Again, it costs about $200,000 for one of these commissions to operate. We don't need them. We don't need to expand them. We need to shut them down. Let private industry do what the government shouldn't be involved with. Thank you.
Ready for the next item?
Yes, Mayor. Item 8A, Action Items, City Attorney, Regarding Discussion of Current Mayoral Selection Policy Set Forth in.
Jemian, I'm sorry, we're gonna flip it around because staff is here for the hearing. We can take the hearing first and then.
Yeah, we had two hearings.
Two hearings. Okay. Let's take the hearings first and then.
Mayor, nine A, nine is hearings, nine A is Community Development, Regarding Adoption of Glendale General Plan 2025 Safety Element Update, One Resolution to Adopt the 2025 Safety Element Update and California Environmental Quality Act Exemption Findings Pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15060 and 15301.
Do I need to open the hearing?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Asatrian. Councilmembers, staff is presenting an amendment to the general plan for the 2025 Safety Element Update for council's consideration and adoption. As council knows from this afternoon's presentation on the general plan update, the safety element is a mandatory element required by state law and one of Glendale's 10 general plan elements. Safety element was first adopted in 1998 and comprehensively updated in 2003. The purpose of the safety element is to identify and reduce the potential short-term and long-term risks associated with natural and man-made hazards present in Glendale. Excuse me. These risks include anything from earthquakes and landslides to dangerous animals and plants to hazardous materials. The safety element is being updated to comply with recent state legislation that requires cities to address wildfire risks, climate change impacts, and community resilience. These mandated updates aim to reduce hazards, improve emergency response, and enhance evacuation plans. This slide highlights the recent state legislation driving these changes. The new state legislation also requires jurisdictions to prepare specific technical studies. The Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment, or known as CCVA, is attached as Appendix B, and an emergency evacuation analysis is included as Appendix C. The CCVA has been prepared as a background document for the safety element, and also the upcoming Climate Action Adaptation Plan and the new environmental justice element. By using the same technical study across multiple plans, there's consistency and conflicting recommendations are minimized. The emergency evacuation analysis also informs and coordinates with multiple city plans, such as the land use and mobility elements. The CCVA evaluates how climate change may impact community members and physical assets in Glendale. These would include natural and recreational resources, buildings and facilities, and infrastructure and critical services. The assessment evaluates risks considering factors such as exposure, sensitivity, and ability to adapt, with a focus on both social and physical vulnerabilities. The results of the CCVA led to the development of policies and programs within the updated safety element intended to strengthen resilience against climate change. The emergency evacuation analysis identifies and evaluates the capacity, safety, and viability of evacuation routes under potential emergency scenarios. The two evacuation scenarios used to determine roadway limitations and travel times were a wildfire in the Virjuco Mountains, San Rafael Hills, East Glendale, and a landslide in the San Gabriel Mountains in North Glendale. The analysis highlights areas prone to traffic congestion and features recommendations for roadway capacity, traffic control, communication strategies, and public education. These findings have been incorporated into the Safety Element Update to guide policies and actions aimed at improving evacuation preparedness, and are very timely, given the increased focus on emergency preparedness following the Eaton and Palisades fires in January. So what's new? And what sections have changed from the 2003 Safety Element? This slide is a quick roadmap identifying the Safety Element sections being amended and the new climate change section being added. and the new climate change section being added. Revisions to the seismic and geological hazards and flooding hazard sections include new policies to improve resiliency, such as monitoring slope stability near evacuation routes, upgrading stormwater systems where needed, and coordinating with LA County flood The fire hazards section has been significantly updated to address state legislation amid the increasing frequency, intensity, and severity of wildfires in California. These include updates to the overview and local conditions sections regarding the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, referred to as CAL FIRE, their designations for fire hazard and very high fire hazard severity zones, as well as local responsibility areas. An updated map, Plate P-3, identifies these areas and critical city facilities, including those that fall within hazard zones. As city council can see, the mountainous areas of the city are located within very high fire hazard severity zones. Following last week's release by CAL FIRE on March 24th of its latest CAL FIRE maps, the city updated its proposed wildfire hazard severity zone and critical map, facilities map, Plate P-3, and attached the map as Exhibit 10 to your staff report. The newest map, as seen on the right, shows the changes to the map that include an increase of approximately 1,500 acres being designated within a fire hazard zone with either very high, high, or moderate designations. Additionally, a range of policies and programs have been developed to reduce fire hazards across different situations. These updated policies and programs focus on wildfire prevention, preparedness, and response, and are based on the California Attorney General's wildfire guidance, CAL FIRE's general plan safety element assessment, and recommendations from CAL FIRE. As required by state law, the safety element has been amended to address climate change risks. This includes a new climate change section, a new overview section discussing greenhouse gases, and a new local conditions section summarizing the findings of the Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment in Appendix B. These possible climate change impacts will vary by location, as influenced by exposure, socioeconomic factors, and physical conditions. Key concerns include social vulnerabilities related to extreme heat and poor air quality, and physical vulnerabilities related to wildfires and landslides. So in response, a new goal has been established: reduce social and physical vulnerabilities from the increasing risks of climate change. New policies and programs have also been crafted related to cooling infrastructure, such as planting of trees and increased access to cooling centers, building resilience, such as updating the Glendale Building Code to require HVAC systems, access to public information by ensuring information is available in multiple languages, and water management, such as detecting and repairing leaks. Updates to the disaster preparedness, recovery, and emergency response section include updates to the overview, local conditions, and summary sections, and such revisions to the emergency response routes as well. New policies and programs were provided in this section with the goal of maintaining a high level of emergency preparedness, such as strengthening evacuation communication systems and frameworks, ensuring resources for vulnerable populations, addressing traffic management during evacuations, and also identifying single-axis neighborhoods that may be impacted during emergencies. Minor revisions were also provided to the hazardous materials, terrorism, civil disturbance and crime, and dangerous animals and plant sections. These revisions were minor cleanups to the overview and local conditions subsections of each one. Of the safety element maps titled Plates, the most notable update is the addition of a single-axis neighborhood map featured as Plate P-4. Wildfire Hazard Severity Zones and Critical Facilities Map, Plate 3, has been updated to reflect the recent revisions to state's CAL FIRE wildfire hazard severity zones. And additionally, the emergency response routes have been moved from Plate 3 to a separate map, Plate 5. Preparation of the safety element included a number of public outreach events with city and consultant staff pop-up booths at Earth Day, Fire Service Day, Building and Safety Open House, and Climate Cafe Open House. Public outreach activities are summarized in Exhibit 7. Following the public outreach in spring of 2024, the draft of the 2025 Safety Element Update was finalized and posted with its new appendices on the city's website and on glendaleplan.com website for a 30-day public comment period starting on November 18th. An email blast with the 2025 Safety Element Update and public comment information, including web links, was sent to all of the glendaleplan.com subscribers and the planning contact list, including all neighborhood associations on November 18th as well. A total of two letters were received during the public comment period that closed on December 18th, and those were included as part of your staff report. Public noticing for the Planning Commission hearing on March 5th and city council this evening complied with the city's noticing requirements, and staff made sure to send additional email notifications to all interested parties to ensure widespread awareness of the pending changes to the safety element in the upcoming public hearings. It's not moving forward. Thank you. The proposed general plan safety element update is exempt from CEQA under Section 1506C2 as it involves policy updates related to climate change, evacuations, and wildfire risks that are not expected to cause significant physical changes to the environment itself. Additionally, the safety element is exempt under the existing facility's exemption for minor alterations to existing facilities, such as traffic signal updates. As mandated by state law, the draft's safety element was submitted to the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, and the board approved, and CAL FIRE's board approved the city's draft on January 21 of this year. The updates were also presented to the Planning Commission at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 5th. Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the city council adopt the 2025 Safety Element Update and adopt the CEQA exemption findings. With that, staff recommends approval of the 2025 Safety Element Update. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge Ringcon Consulting and Kittleson Consulting for their work on the element and technical analyses, as well as senior planner Dennis Joe, principal planner Teresa Santalina, and the various other interdepartmental staff members for their contributions to the update. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I have a few comments here and there, but...
Can you speak to the dangerous animals and plants update?
The dangerous animals and plants section is... And those were very minor ones. If you'll note, these are on page 32 of the draft element. Other than adding titles, the only update was to add the section at the city, the existing, the existing program is the city shall encourage residents who wish to compost in their properties to use enclosed composting bins, and we just added the section as part of the city's edible food recovery program and organics procurement program required by SB 1383. So for that section, it's very, very minimal.
No bear yoga section?
Pardon? So nothing in regards to bears, coyotes, uh, or any other dangerous plants?
We shouldn't have anything on coyotes?
We do not at this point in time. It is not recommended.
Okay.
The one thing I do want to mention, Madam Mayor, that's very telling, is that map that shows where we were in terms of fire hazard and where we are today. Everyone should take note of that in terms of, you don't have to bring it back up if that's what you're looking for. I think it, folks, I think, saw that, the expansion of the red zone. And even though we have what some perceive wetter years, and this year, we still have yet to see whether we're gonna get the rain that we need to get, when we do have these wetter seasons, you have more growth of plant life, of grass, of shrubs, of the chaperone environment. And then when you don't have continuous rain, or you have even one dry year, or even a few dry months, that becomes kindling. And you're seeing here just how that's expanding. And for anyone, you know, who looks at Glendale, you go over, we look at this map often, and we don't realize how much of it is in that chaperone-type setting and homes right up against it. So we were very fortunate. God smiled upon Glendale this last time when unfortunately it was our neighbor in Altadena, the community that suffered. But unless we take measures to prepare for it, it will eventually probably strike here. In my lifetime, I've seen the hills burn at least twice, and so we need to be prepared.
Thank you. All right. Question?
Question. So recently, the council decided to remove a lane of travel on Locrissena Avenue and install dedicated bike lanes. Is Locrissena Avenue an evacuation route? And did that decision by council in any way affect the analysis that you did? In particular, the, I think, the fire danger or the landslide?
So, Councilmember Najarian, if you don't mind, Locrissena is, and in the map itself, an emergency response route designation? Yes, that is correct, and this is based on Plate P-5. The safety element itself is mandating that the fire department review all such emergency response routes and to ensure adequate accessibility on such routes. So in terms of its removal of the lane for the bike lane, I would actually look to the fire department to ensure that they have adequate access.
I think they did. I mean, I, I think, was that, so is that the trigger? If it is, if you do anything, any roadway improvement, or whatever it might be, let's say it's the BRT lane that we're gonna add, and it's an emergency response route, that kicks it to fire then? Or do we automatically kick these things to fire? Because I think fire really is presented with a lot of, any roadway improvements, if I'm not mistaken.
Councilmember Najarian, primarily the roadways that are part of the system, the network of emergency response routes. And we have a map of those, and it gets updated.
Correct.
Councilmember Najarian, I would also add that whenever we make plans, such as bicycle plans, pedestrian plans, things of that nature, fire and police are also involved to look at potential impacts at response times. There's been instances where, you know, a certain project hasn't been recommended as part of a plan because of the impact of a response time.
Yeah, I don't want to pick on bicyclists today, but let's say, let's say, speedhumps. Let's say, let me give you another example, speedhumps on an, let's say, on Ethel. I think Ethel was, or Mountain, Mountain is a good example, was a primary response route.
Right.
So that gets kicked to fire. Fire gives their analysis and opinion on it.
Correct.
And comes back to ultimately its council still that makes that decision. Is that correct?
Goes to Transportation and Parking Commission first.
UBC and then, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so these are, so labeling these roads as evacuation routes or primary response routes triggers the review by fire and other public safety, I presume, police as well? And then they put it through the system? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, just odds and ends here. So as I was going through, and I know we've seen this before, and so I apologize, sometimes we don't really focus entirely until the last moment, but we have Policy 4-6, I think it is. It's about electrical undergrounding, and I see we have Mr. Mellon here, our acting general manager for Glendale Water and Power. It says, "City shall implement an aggressive electrical undergrounding plan." That's pretty strong. Shall implement an aggressive electrical undergrounding plan. I love undergrounding for lots of reasons, safety reasons also, just, it's, it's a lot more attractive, but it is very, very expensive, isn't it? And I'm kind of curious what are, what kinds of plans we have around this and, you know, how are we gonna pay for it?
Good evening, Scott Mellon, acting general manager for Glendale Water and Power. I've heard numbers as much as twice the cost underground is put overhead. Really depends on the terrain. The effort to do that, we've actually had a lot of very adult conversations about that recently, especially since we had the windstorm and the fires in the area. We do have one high voltage line that kind of goes over, if you look at the map, in the left third of the side, kind of goes over the hillside, and that's one of our power cutoff lines. If we were to do something like that, we would probably focus on the areas where most affected closer to residents. That'd be more like feeders. And I think the numbers that were run, this was a couple of years ago, it's on the order of $500 million to $600 million to do all of the work. If we were planning on doing that, we'd probably start attacking some of the worst conditions and kind of piecewise, take small bites out of it over a few years, and try and reduce the impacts. This is more about mitigation than anything else. It would take large amounts of dollars to remove the potential of fire or us causing fire. All we do right now is we mitigate.
Right. Okay, I was just, I, you know, it hit me, and I hadn't seen it before, I guess, shall implement an aggressive plan. So I don't know if we've all signed up for whatever the costs are with that, but it's, I'm just putting it out there that it's, it is a strong position that we're taking here. It's not consider implementing, it's, it's not shall implement an electrical underground, it's shall implement an aggressive electrical undergrounding plan, so...
If the council, Councilmember Bratman, if the council feels more comfortable saying shall consider implementing an aggressive, that would be one option.
Since it hasn't really come to us, we haven't looked at the dollars, I mean, I like the idea. It's not that I don't. It's just seems like something that's maybe, maybe we're a little ahead of ourselves the way we've worded that?
I tend to agree, Councilmember Bratman. I would recommend, for the sake of consistency, in the rest of the document, we make reference to shall explore, shall consider, but ultimately, any of these plans will have to come to council for approval and appropriation of the funds. So it's not something that any, any of the involved respective departments can take on without council's approval.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. And I have a couple more, not, not yours. Yeah. So, under the climate risk programs and policies, so one of them, I have a question. Program 1.1 talks about repaving with, you know, it doesn't say it, but I'm assuming it means like cool roads, you know, the surfacing on roads and parking lots and things like that that would have a cooling effect. I know we've piloted a couple of locations, and not for now, but I would be interested in knowing how those pilots are going or have gone, and what are our thoughts about, you know, establishing a more substantial plan for when we do go in and repave roads? Are we gonna be using some of these materials that offset the urban heat island effect? So that's kind of a question, but it doesn't need to be answered now. Okay. Program 1.2 says, "City shall continue to work to implement a tree planting program." I'm sorry, "City shall work to implement." I think we should say continue. We are already doing that.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make note of the fact that that, you know, we make sure people who are reading this know we're already well on our way. We've, we made that decision a few years ago, and I know we're, we are planting in what it says, high social sensitivity census tracts, places with the lowest tree equity score, et cetera, et cetera. So we're already doing that. So, we're already doing that. Then, just a program, we have three programs that involve buildings, 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. They all involve looking at building codes to do things like requiring cooling in all multifamily buildings. We have one about cool roofs, and then we have one about installing high efficiency two-way AC units whenever HVACs are replaced. And I know those, some of those, well, all of those, I guess, would have to come back to council for consideration. I do want to mention something that I don't think I brought up before, but there is a bill going, it just passed the Assembly, I think, today, AB 306, which would take away entirely all local control over building amendments outside of the triennial cycle that the CEC does, the energy code. But it would not allow us to implement any additional code changes, reach codes, or adopt Calgaryan standards, or anything like that, for, I think, till 2031 or 2032. So, I would, just on that, I would like to pass on the information I have, because I've been watching it pretty closely, I've talked to the author many times. And it may go through amendments, but I was, I think it's something that we should consider making a statement on, because it is, it's a local control issue, and it would also take away our ability to do a number of these things that we have in the pipeline and for a very long time. So, I will share the information I have with you, Mr. Galanian, and then perhaps you can prepare a memo to council on what the implications are, and we could consider whether we want to formally weigh in. And I think the last one I have is Program 4.3. It says, "City shall where feasible implement a program to conduct an energy-water nexus study to inform the city's future public water rate structure." Well, we are going through a water COSA soon, right? And I would think this would be part of the water COSA, this looking at this water-energy nexus and looking at how that may play into how we set rates for different areas of the city, something that I've brought up over and over again, over many years, that I think that our lowlands are subsidizing our uplands, because we cost a lot of money to pump water uphill, and we charge the same rate to somebody who's a multifamily dweller in South Glendale as we do to somebody who's got a large home with a lot of landscape areas in the far north. So, I think that's something, we shouldn't say where feasible, we will, I mean, I think we're going to study this, or we should study this.
It is part of the consideration.
So, I just wanted to point that out.
Yes. It is part of that consideration. Those are gonna be considered in the COSA, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other?
To be honest with you, I am not completely sure what we're doing here today. I know it's a general plan amendment that we are adopting, and there's so many, so much information in here. And I don't know, for some reason, my packet was kind of not what it should have been. It didn't have the tabs that I could find, the numbers, and where all the reports were. And after I went through it somewhat, it was a duplicate, so it got me confused a little bit. But I have a couple of questions. I don't know if I'm ready to vote one way or the other, because my questions that I have are not answered. And specifically, when I look at the fire zone that Councilmember Kasakian mentioned, which is expanding, if you look at the part of the North Glendale from, I think it's the Glenox up, the fire zone is expanding, and the Reduga Woodlands, Rossmoine area, and some of the neighboring neighborhoods, if you will, there are in, like Reduga Woodlands is in liquefaction zone, it's in high fire zone, it is in flood zone, and it is in earthquake zone. So, and some of, even in our presentation that we have today, there are references to some of these reports that are still pending, like Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, New Environmental Justice Element, our Bicycle Master Plan is, my understanding, it's still The circulation element, the land use element, they're all being referred in this, in this, most of them are being referred in this report. And since they are pending, I don't, like Mr. Councilman Najarian mentioned, Locust Center Avenue, it's not built yet. We don't know what the results of that upgrade or change will be. And there is a talk about single access neighborhoods, and that area has a couple of them. One is Whiting Woods, I believe, and the other one is Oakmont Woods, that has only one access, that you go over the bridge to access from that residential neighborhood to Locust Center Avenue. That's the only access they have to exit in case of fire, earthquake, or what have any emergency. I'm not against having a very solid emergency plan, but I don't have the answers to my questions. We had a study session, which I called for, for Climate Adaptation and Action Plan, which is about 800 pages. I had all my pages highlighted and notes and sticky notes everywhere. We didn't have enough time to go through it, and this report refers to that plan in various As far as, one question, the greenhouse gas calculation, do we, how do they, how do they, it's always been a question in my mind, and I never asked it because it didn't come along. But how do they calculate Glendale, how much Glendale generates? Because if you go to west side of Glendale, where San Fernando Road is and Grayson Power Plant, the old one was, it's surrounded by several freeways. And in late, I think it was 2018 or 2019, we conducted a study as to how much pollution the freeways generate that affects Glendale at, in that area. And at that time, it was about 600,000 cars, you know, traveling between 5 and 134 and two freeway and what have you. And how do we, how do we calculate that? And also, we have 200,000 people on daily basis that come visit Glendale. Is that part of the greenhouse gas that they generate? Is it part of our calculation or not? If you can answer that, then I will just make a few more comments, and that will be it.
Councilmember Garpetian, the greenhouse gas calculations are not part of the safety element update. Those are separate. The two studies, the required analyses, which would be the Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment, Appendix B, and the Emergency Evacuation Assessment Analysis as Appendix C, were completed. They are completely, they're done. They're attached to the staff report. They inform the policies in certain sections of the safety element, and these two appendices are required by state law. These two appendices, or I should say, the two analyses, also inform other plans within the city, such as the upcoming Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and the upcoming Environmental Justice Element. But those are separate matters that are not related to the safety element.
They're not related.
The technical analyses inform the various plans. And so, there's a common background assessment, yet the different plans are separate.
Okay. And that's why, when I say I don't have enough information on this, or I'm not very clear, that's one of the reasons. But again, the plans that we have in place and is moving forward, like Locust Center Avenue Plan, which is taking a traffic lane out, and I don't know if that was considered in this plan or not. But again, I know that this is a state mandate, where you have to do a report, but I'm not clear on it, so I won't be, I'm gonna abstain from voting on this item tonight. Not that I'm against it, but I don't have any, I don't have enough information to make a wise decision. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I'm gonna close the hearing.
Well, I'm closing the hearing, yes.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion. I'll move to, is that all right?
Yes, of course. And just with a comment regarding 4.6 electrical undergrounding, is that correct?
Yes, you were gonna just tweak the wording on that, as we heard. So, I'll move the safety element update and the sequel exemption findings.
I'm gonna ask one question. That is gonna, how do you coordinate with the other departments?
So, the safety element went through various reviews with interdepartmental routing, so it was reviewed by Glendale Water and Power, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and all of their feedback was incorporated into the current draft.
So, did Glendale Water and Power say that they wanted the shall aggressively?
They reviewed, I can tell you, because we actually included references, that, yes, Glendale Water Power, Leo Chan reviewed the document and provided comments. So, at this point in time...
I'm seeing a look on Mr. Mellon's face. If that's something else, please come up.
So, but again, we can definitely incorporate any comments and changes.
This isn't just for you and for your department. I asked this question with, you know, other reports that come to us that I recognize need input from other departments, and I really don't know what the inner workings of that process are, where, I'm gonna keep my comments specific to this, because there's another plan that's being worked on where I've learned that, well, I've been told that as departments are giving their feedback, it's not being incorporated exactly as provided, but as that department sees fit, that's bringing the report. So, can you speak to this one?
I think what I could say is that we always work to, we endeavor to collaborate, and we always give our personal opinions and our professional opinions on these sorts of documents. I don't think I could speak exactly to the words that were used in that particular scenario. I know that if I had read it, I would not have been that aggressive with my words, but I can't speak to who supported the original verbiage. But I think, I mean, we have all these extra set of eyes that are helping us, and I think with that, we can make the modifications.
Yeah. I think just, not just for this report, but any future reports being, because when I read them, I'm thinking that it's basically the input of the different departments, as they've been able to identify too, so that there's continuity and same standards placed across the board on all plans that are coming to us.
Thank you.
All right. There was a motion in a second?
I don't think there was a second.
There's a second?
Is there gonna be a second? If not, I'll second it.
Okay. All right. You have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Stain.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Alcediria?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, the next item is 3B, Public Works Regarding Vacation of the First Alley, Esterly of Brand Boulevard, Northerly of Fairview Avenue, Alley 130, Vacation Case Number 188V. One resolution ordering the vacation, two resolution adopting Plan Number 12242. And Mayor, I do have a card on this item.
Okay. We'll open the hearing.
Do you need a report, or do you want to just hear from the speaker?
I don't need a report.
We need a report?
I don't think so.
Okay. We'll take the speaker.
Mr. Khan, Rodney Khan, do you have three minutes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are here in the city of Glendale. And we are here this evening to support the alley vacation. This subject alley is a substandard alley in width. It's a dead-end alley in length. It does not go through to the street to the north, which is Dryden Street. This alley actually serves only our site, and it serves four substandard garages on the rear that will be removed. The width of the alley is 15 feet, so seven and a half feet will go to the east, seven and a half feet will go to the west, and it'll allow us to build a much-needed density bonus housing project. We work with GWP and AT&amp;T in terms of the utilities, and we already have agreements in place. So, once again, I'm here this evening to support this alley vacation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Just to be clear, the alley does not cut through anything. It's a dead-end alley.
It's a dead-end alley, and it stops mid-block, so it only serves our site. It doesn't go through to the street to the north, which is Dryden.
I have one question. Oh, not for you. I have a question for...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think for you. No, I have a question for staff. I'd asked during the briefing that we reached out to, I think it's St. Mark's Church, because it dead-ends right at the church, and I want to make 100% sure that they're not using it for any, any access.
So, Councilmember Bratman, unfortunately, we were not able to make contact, but we did go to the offices, we made calls, and we sent an email as well of the record we had in file. So, we made three attempts to contact them, but we weren't able to get a...
But have we visual, or maybe Mr. Khan can answer the question. Is there, at the top of that alley, it ends right at the, I think, at the property line of the church? Is that, is that right? And I don't know if there's an entrance. I don't think there is, but I'm just, I just want to make 100% sure that we're not taking away anything from them.
Sure. So, Councilmember Bratman, just for the record, there's no access from that alley to the church. It's just our site. There's a wall there, and the alley itself only serves the garages on our site. So, no pedestrians, no vehicles, no nothing.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Sure.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I'll move resolutions.
And I'll second? Okay. You got it. You beat me to it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Alcediria?
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, we are going back to Item 8A, Action Items.
City Attorney Regarding Discussion of Current Mayorial Selection Policy Set Forth in Glendale Municipal Code, Section 2.04.020, and its application to the upcoming mayor selection on April 15, 2025. Mayor, I do have two cards on this item.
Mr. Garcia? Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as we're getting the slide presentation, I'll just have a few comments. So, I was asked to provide a summary of the current mayor selection process that's embodied in the Glendale Municipal Code, Section 2.04.020, and how that ordinance will govern the discussion to take place on April 15, when the council selects the mayor for 25, 26. This is a presentation on that subject, and I certainly invite any questions and discussion on that topic. I would note, this should not be a discussion on who should be selected mayor on the 15th, or a discussion of how the ordinance should or could be amended. Council has previously directed us to bring back sample language to modify the current ordinance, which we'll bring back upon direction of the mayor and council. Next slide, please. So, starting with the city charter, so the charter obviously requires that the council choose one of, one of your own to be the presiding officer and to be called the mayor. The mayor is selected pursuant to the municipal code during the first regular meeting after the first Monday in April of each year. So, that will be April 15 for this year. Next slide, please. So, the ordinance, Section 2.04.020, has an order of precedence for selection of the mayor.
and how that ordinance will govern the discussion to take place on April 15, when the council selects the mayor for 2025, 26. This is a presentation on that subject, and I certainly invite any questions and discussion on that topic. I would note this should not be a discussion on who should be selected mayor on the 15th, or a discussion of how the ordinance should or could be amended. Council has previously directed us to bring back sample language to modify the current ordinance, which we'll bring back upon direction of the mayor and council. Next slide, please. So, starting with the city charter, so the charter obviously requires that the council choose one of, one of your own to be the presiding officer and to be called the mayor. The mayor is selected pursuant to the municipal code during the first regular meeting after the first Monday in April of each year, so that will be April 15 for this year. Next slide, please. So, the, the ordinance, Section 2.04.020, has an order of precedence for selection of the mayor, and it starts with the council member with the longest continuous uninterrupted service on council since last serving as mayor. That person shall be selected mayor, with the exceptions we'll discuss below. And in the event that that, that results in a tie vote, meaning two council members are, two or more council members are tied with the longest continuous uninterrupted service, then you looked at the most votes that the council members either received in the last election or highest percentage of votes if the council members who are tied were elected in, in different elections. Next slide, please. So, with respect to the mayor selection process, there are a couple of provisions in Section 2.04.020 governing qualifications to serve as mayor. So first, if the council member in line under the order of precedence that's to be selected is unwilling or unable to serve, then that person shall not be selected to be mayor. And then, that council member who is chosen to basically pass or had been, is unable to serve, will then be placed in next in line for the subsequent mayoral selection process. It's, it's, I believe it's well-known now, the council member Kasakian is next in line to serve as mayor under the order of precedence, but has announced that he will not be accepting the mayor appointment on the 15th. So with respect to a couple of other provisions in the code, the 2.04.020 subdivision D provides that a council member whose term, a council term will expire in the same year that the mayor's term would also expire, shall not be selected mayor. So there are currently three council members currently serving whose terms expire next year, and I'll get back to this provision, and this provision, absent some other provisions, would, would not be able to serve as mayor. And then lastly, a council member who should not be appointed if, for the immediate subsequent term of mayor, so the current mayor would not be, under this provision, would not be permitted to serve as mayor the following year, unless all the other council members decline to serve. Next slide, please. So as you're, you're all aware, the 2.04.020 contains a provision regarding, what's called the best interest clause, that's subsection H of the current ordinance, and it provides that notwithstanding the provisions of the section, in the event the council determines it's in its discretion, that is in the best interest of the city, not to appoint the council member next in line to serve as mayor in accordance with the procedure, including but not reason because of mental or physical incapacity, significantly limiting the ability to perform male moral duties or criminal conviction, then the council should appoint the next qualified council member. Next slide, please. And as has been discussed, this provision, in conjunction with all the other provisions, have been interpreted to mean that the act of selecting a mayor is a legislative act, meaning that unlike quasi-judicial acts that come before you, such as, such as our appeal hearings, the selection will not be overturned unless it's arbitrary, capricious, or entirely without evidentiary support. Additionally, as a legislative act, the selection of mayor is presumed valid, and there's no judicial inquiry into the subjective motivations of the legislature, legislators. So, subjective motivations of council members making this decision is generally not subject to judicial inquiry. And then express legislative findings related to a best interest determination are not required. So, in the, in the context of mayor's, the mayor's selection and the best interest clause, the council has broad discretion in making these decisions. The council can make a determination to not pick a council member next in line and need not give a detailed reason as to why, nor do the council members have to agree on a reason. Just to give you an example, the council could decide that it's the city's best interest not to pick a council member, because it is instead in the city's best interest to pick someone else. In other words, they don't have to specifically identify a reason that there's something improper and appropriate about appointing a particular individual to serve as mayor. That said, I, I would note, and I discussed it previously, that one could read the ordinance to have some conflicting provisions. On the one hand, we have a provision that says council members whose terms end next year cannot be selected mayor this year, while at the same time, the ordinance, on the other hand, the, the best interest clause, which has been determined to grant broad discretion to council to select the mayor, can be interpreted to override that provision. Further, I would note that the charter requires the council to select a mayor and requires it to occur this month. And so, the council always, would always have the discretion to determine council members are or are not in the best interest to be appointed mayor, and therefore, even though there might be council members who would otherwise be not qualified to be appointed mayor under the provision, saying that they can't be mayor if their term is up next year, it's our opinion that due to the best interest clause, as well as the charter provision requiring selection of one of the council members to be mayor, that those provisions would trump the other provision related to not being able to serve in mayor as your last term. Again, that's not, I cannot say this for certain that that's how a court will rule, because we haven't come upon that particular situation before, but given how the court, a court has interpreted our current provision, I do believe it grants broad discretion to the council in selecting a mayor. So, last, last slide, please. Just want to mention, I mentioned this before, the council has given us direction to bring back a report, and we'll bring it back upon, upon the direction of the council, but there are three areas where the council asked us in the future, it won't govern the decision on the 15th, but in the future, to provide some revisions to the ordinance, and we were gonna provide you language before actually bringing in ordinance. So one would be to revise the seniority rule, to give priority to council members who have not served as mayor, provided they have served a certain amount of time on council. Another provision would delete or modify the rule regarding serving as mayor in the last year of your term. And then, a third point of direction given by council was to provide alternate language regarding the best interest clause to narrow the scope of its applicability. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the process, but that's kind of, that's where we are.
I have clarifying questions.
Sure.
In your slide, you say, "A council member whose council term will expire in the same year that the mayor's term will also expire shall not be selected as mayor."
Right.
And the ordinance that's in front of me says a council member whose council term will expire in the same year shall not be selected as mayor. A council member whose council term will expire within 180 days after the date of the selection of the mayor shall not be selected as mayor.
Sure.
That 180 days is not in your presentation. Can you, I wasn't here when this-
Correct.
Was introduced.
I, I didn't highlight here, because that's, that particular, that last sentence is not applicable to the, the selection this year. It would be next year, so what that wasn't intended to address was because our election in 2026 will, will occur in June, and the mayor selection next year will occur in 20, will occur in April of next year, unless council provides alternate direction. This, this section was intended to cover the, basically the opposite of what is occurring this year, so it would prevent somebody from being selected mayor in, in April of next year, and then having their election up in June, and then, again, having, not having, preventing the council member who gets selected from being able to run as mayor, because they're selected in April as mayor. So that was, it was sort of the flip side of, of the rule that we're applying in the first instance here, which says you can't be mayor in the last year of your term. You also can't be mayor if you're, if you're mayor, council, if the selection is gonna occur after you get reelected.
180 days, though.
Uh, we just-
How'd that, how'd that come up?
We just came up with a number that was, that was-
Anyone that was here at the time?
Yeah.
I don't know if it was specific to this, but 180 days is common in usually elections law. It, it's a date that comes up frequently. I'm, right now, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head the specific instances to which, but I know, for instance, we may even have fundraising rules that prevent us to be able to, maybe for incumbents to raise money.
The election cycle is 180 days under our campaign, campaign finance, and that was also a case-
I think that, that was the logic for the-
The elections were ever changed from June to, or from the statewide primary to the statewide general election, which is in November. It was also intended possibly to address that situation as well.
Okay, so I'll, I'll say that the reason that I wanted this on the agenda, because it seems like some of my colleagues had different interpretations, and I wanted to ensure that there was open conversation and dialogue and opportunity for us to get clarity before the next meeting, as to avoid a similar situation that hap, happened last year. I would never wish that upon anybody, and I hope that, you know, whatever we decide next week helps us move forward together as a city. And so, I think this is, I think there were some colleagues that were trying to have conversations. You know, if you have clarifying points that you want to make, that you disagree with our city attorney, I think this would be the time, but, you know, I've said this before about this ordinance, I see it as a non-policy policy, based on the best interest clause, where we can really just do anything using the best interest. But, you know, if there's a different understanding of that, then please have that discussion today, so.
Oh, I, I have a couple questions. The, the dates of this bi-annual election that we have, the bumps from April to June.
March to June.
No, or we can-
Yeah, March, March and June.
March in presidential years.
The previous.
Yeah. So the state, one of the problems is the state can change its election date. They moved, didn't they move it to March to be early this last cycle, to be relevant in the presidential primary?
So the state law is that the statewide primary occurs in March during presidential election years, and then in June in non-presidential election years. So, 2026, it'll be in June, 2028, it'll be back in March.
And our, our previous election date was the first Tuesday in April.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, if you recall, that was changed because of a law SB 415 that required cities whose, whose turnout was 25% or more, less than it would, it was in statewide primaries, the statewide general elections, were required to transition. And then, due to the fact that it was very challenging to run elections, for cities to run elections on their own without the help from either the consultants that were in the business or the county, it became very challenging. Almost all cities transitioned to either March, June, or November.
I mean, the whole, the whole thing is rather awkward, you know, going from April, excuse me, March. Is it the second Tuesday in March, or when does that?
It's usually the Tuesday after the first Monday.
Tuesday after the first Monday. And then flipping back to June, and we've got mayors whose terms are expiring, and there's new council members coming on a month or two later. Is there, what, if the council said, let's move the selection of the mayor to our fiscal year, to, to June, you know, the end of June, I guess, or July 1st, what does that involve, and what's the time? And what other ramifications would that have? I mean, let's sort of think this through, how would that?
Like, just off, off the top of my head, I think, so it's in the municipal code that the election, the mayoral selection occurs in April, so we would need an ordinance to amend that. And I would, I would note that you would probably want to set it past sometime in July at the earliest, because the June election occurs, and then it takes the county 30 days to count the votes, and then you're, you're in July, so you want to have it, I assume, you would want to have it until the election is called and the new council members are seated before you have the mayor selection. If that's the idea, to, to put it past and allow a brand-new council to select the mayor. And then, yeah, and I would note that it would probably, it makes sense to have it in place. You could put it in place so before, you know, so that it's actually effective before the next, the next municipal election.
How do other cities do it, that have the-
I can speak to that, because I-
The only one I can speak to is Burbank, their elections are now in November, and I know they changed their mayor, changed their mayor selection from May, which coincided to December. So they did what, kind of what you're suggesting, put it after, after the election. I don't know about other cities, but I assume it's, it's, there's probably similar.
So, I think on that, it's not based on fiscal year, it's the reorganization meeting-
Right.
Where the new members come in, they take the oath, at the same meeting is when they also select the new mayor, which gives the incoming the opportunity. Was there a reason why we haven't fixed ours, because technically?
Yeah, there was no reason, there was no, we changed the election date, but we kept the mayoral selection date the same. And, and it didn't-
If I look at last year's, right, and, you know, with all due respect to all colleagues here and, and past, the way that it occurred last time was there was a vote taken for the mayor, and then that person was not, you know, they voted, and then the next meeting, they were no longer on the council.
Correct.
Right, and so, that also prevents, not just prevents the new incoming person to take role, but it also creates a situation where that person literally was out a week after and made the selection before leaving, which... So, I mean, I, I just, I just wanted to know why, like, I know that other cities have fixed that schedule, and I was just trying to understand why Glendale hasn't.
There was no reason, it was just not considered. So certainly, when we bring back the report, I mean, if we bring back the report on changing the, the policy, and I know it's, it's still, it's still, we have the direction to bring it back. Once we, once we are told to put it on, we can certainly include that change of date to, you know, for future mayor selection.
There was another interesting selection when someone had just been seated as a council member on the, that was the Drayman, my little red wagon, where he says, "If you know, you know. This is your mess." You know, there was a, you know, there was a typical sort of back and forth as to who wants to be mayor, and he didn't want to be the one casting a deciding vote, so he abstained, and, and said, "This, this, you know, unable to decide is your problem. I'm the new guy, I'm coming in, and you guys work it out." So that's the other, that's the other, I guess, problems and issues like that can occur before or after, but what would that take? So let's say we decided to change it to a new date, whatever that date is. It's an ordinance?
It is an ordinance to amend the municipal code, yes.
And how would that take effect, let's say, without either equitably? Would someone get a shorter mayor's term, or a longer term, or how?
The council would have to decide that, they could decide to put it in effect. You know, we'd bring it back, it would, it would take place obviously after this upcoming mayor selection. Then the council could decide to adopt an ordinance and say it's effective at the next, the next mayor selection, meaning presumably then whoever has selected mayor in April would get a slightly longer term. Alternatively, the council could say, "We're gonna let this person serve a year," and then the following term, the following person gets to serve a longer, somebody's gonna get a longer term. I guess theoretically, you could give somebody a shorter term, you could say, you know, April. I mean, it's really up to the council how you want to do it. Question?
Yes, please.
So, in your report on page four of the presentation, powerful presentation, it says, "Mayor selection continued. If the council member in line that is unwilling or unable to serve shall not be selected mayor." Council, and then it goes on saying, "The council member unwilling or unable to serve shall be placed next in line." The ordinance has another section or segment between these two. It says, "If council member in line to be selected mayor in accordance with the procedures of this section but is not, but is unable or unwilling to serve as mayor at the time of selection, then the council shall select the next council member shall, select the next council member in line, and the council member who's unwilling or unable to be the mayor shall be placed next in line for mayoral appointment under the procedures in subsection B2." Am I, am I correct? Is that, is that what it is?
That's correct.
So this here is Mr. Kasakian?
Correct.
Next in line, and you still have two weeks, Mr. Kasakian, to change your mind. So, who is next in line after Mr. Kasakian?
Councilmember Garpetian, it's you.
Okay, so I'm not saying this was, you know, left out in purpose, but I think this should have been there, regardless of whoever is next in line.
Apologize, I would put this together very quickly.
I know, I understand, I understand. And I know that we had a court case, and that decision made a lot more, you know, make this
Correct.
policy a little bit different than what it was maybe last year. So that's, and I agree that the mayor selection, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. If you have the council members who are running for next year, if it's a non-presidential year, it's in June, then you have council members who are leaving. For example, like you mentioned there, they make the decision on the mayorship and leave. And on the other hand, Councilmember Najarian mentioned that new elected officials, newly-elected members of this council, when they make a decision, sometimes they have, they have some, some issues on making it. So, but I think, I think it's the correct thing for people who have just got elected to select the new mayor in that upcoming year as well. So when, when this, this item comes back on the agenda, we'll, we'll talk about it and.
Let me ask you how you would interpret this, Mr. Garcia. So if, despite any other provision in the ordinance, if a council member is in line to be selected mayor in accordance with the procedures of this section, but is unable, I'll skip unwilling, but is unable to serve as mayor at the time of the selection, then the council shall select the next council member in line, and the council member who was unable to be mayor shall be placed next in line. How do you interpret the word "unable" to be selected mayor? Using the plain English definition of unable to be selected?
Councilmember Najarian, my recollection from when the ordinance was adopted was that the council member was either, you know, physically unable or will not be, will be missing, will be absent from meetings, for example, in the preliminary part of the mayorship. Those were some examples, I think, that we discussed. But I think we, you know, obviously the focus is on somebody who's going to, you know, who's going to pass, who's going to say they're unwilling to do it for the upcoming year. And we put unable just in case they, they could not, you know, physically attend meetings, they could not participate for, you know, legal reasons, whatever the case may be. I don't know that we had a specific, I would have to, if you gave me a fact pattern and said, "Is this unable?", I would probably be able to answer better than sort of in a vacuum and.
Let me give you a real possibility that if we don't change this. Let's just say, let's just say in April, I mean, in two weeks, despite Mr. Garpetian being next in line, we elect Mr. Brotman, and we come to the next year. Who is next in line? Is it Mr. Garpetian, or is it Mr.?
No.
Mr. Kasakian.
Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmember Kasakian.
Well, it was because he deferred, and Mr. Garpetian was not able to serve as mayor. Why doesn't he?
Well, I think.
Stand in front of, it's a messed-up ordinance, I'm going to tell you this.
I think it's worth, worthy of having a discussion to clean up some of these things now that we've gone through it a little bit. I was arguing that case, though, unable refers to somebody cannot serve the office as opposed to they're not in line to serve. I think that's how you'd interpret that.
Yeah, the bottom line, and I was, I was a strict constructionist last year, and I, I felt very strongly that the words "shall," and I, this is nothing new, you know, you know where, what my position was, means that it was an obligatory action to take. The judge saw it in a completely different way, and he was clear, this judge in Department 82, that, he said that the, the act of selecting the mayor is legislative and political. And as you said, a court can't come back, if someone were to object, a court can't come in and say what was right, what was wrong, despite language, despite all our best language in the first five paragraphs. In the end, where they talk about the best interest, that just blows everything out of the water. I disagreed with that at the time I was arguing. I disagreed with it in front of the court, well, through my attorney. That was his ruling, though, that was his ruling. Maybe another judge would have ruled it another way. But because we have this case specifically to Glendale, and it isn't some obscure case in another county, you know, in another jurisdiction with another different ordinance, this judge pretty much, you know, what they say, laid down the law. That is what he did specifically with our ordinance in mind. So I hope that we can clean this ordinance up. One of the things that I'm concerned about is the connotation that is given to a council member that is not selected mayor, and that there is an implication that that person is somehow bad for the city. He's not in the best interests of the city. And that isn't necessarily the case, in some cases it might be. I mean, if you've got a loony tune up here, and, you know, it's clear that that person.
It was the will of the people.
I'm sorry, the, but that's, it, it's sort of a negative, you know, like a scarlet letter that that person could wear, depending how they took it. I took it certainly as a scarlet letter. And perhaps that's not what council wants to do in the future. I think they want to maybe adjust that language so it is not something that is a badge of dishonor in some way. And I would leave that to the wordsmiths as to how to make that decision if, in fact, we are going to stick with something similar to this best interests going forward.
Amir.
Yes.
It was already mentioned, but because we are having this discussion, and it's on the record, I had posted a statement on my social media accounts and had also sent a note out to my email lists stating that I am withdrawing my name from consideration for the mayorship. The reasons being that I, at this point, have circumstances that will not allow me to dedicate myself fully to the position of mayor. I mentioned in my note that sometimes the duties of mayor require this delicate balancing act between you choose between which family events you go to and which city events you go to, and that's what all of us do, day in and day out on council. I believe and hope that we all do that. Unfortunately, the mayorship, as you've seen, and how my, everyone on this dais who's served as mayor has seen, don't afford that same flexibility. And until such time that that changes, it makes it very difficult for me to commit to this because I do have a young family, one I'm very much committed to. And for that and other reasons, I am withdrawing my name from consideration when the time for the selection of mayor comes, understanding that there may be some folks who are excited about that, there are folks who may be disappointed about that. Ultimately, I believe that no title defines what any of us do up here. All of us are equals and work in concert to do the best for the city. And lastly, no, this is not an April Fool's joke. I don't plan on changing my mind two weeks from now. This is my decision, and I stand by it, and I thank everyone who's been very supportive of this decision. It really has, some of the comments have brought out the best in our community and reminded me why we struggle and toil up here. Some of the other comments are a little bit more cynical, but I expect nothing less from those other sources. And I thank staff and everyone else up here for supporting me in my decision. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or? Oh, we have two speakers?
Mayor, I have one speaker card, there are two people waiting on.
Okay.
Beth Brooks, you have three minutes. RT Ramdari, RT, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm addressing my comments directly to Glendale City Attorney Mike Garcia. Counselor, as a currently licensed California attorney, you have a responsibility to uphold the law of this state. And specifically in your current role as city attorney, you are required to uphold the city ordinances or laws of the city of Glendale. The mayoral selection ordinance that you so clearly outlined dictate that this process must be followed to the letter of the law. This is Glendale city law, sir. As the city attorney, you will be held responsible for any deviation from this clearly defined ordinance. The bottom line is this, Mr. Garcia. Your role is to ensure that the mayoral selection process and the vote is carried out with the utmost integrity, and that it is morally and legally do the right thing by following the current laws that are on the books. Because the people of Glendale are watching you, and you work for us.
Vivian Khanchan, Vivian, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council and mayor. There are some of us who are under the impression that certain members of council would like to continue pulling the strings of whomever is next elected as mayor, under the guise of our so-called best interests. After the shenanigans that happened with the mayorship last time, I'm calling to say that we, the people, are watching very closely to ensure that this does not happen again with Mr. Garpetian next term, and that the will of the people is carried out regarding who gets a crack at becoming our next mayor. Additionally, I'd like to thank Mr. Garpetian for his always considerate decisions on behalf of Glendale residents and for his even keel temperament. He is never afraid to say that he may not know enough about something, and he's always willing to go back to research it before making a mindful decision. You are a great example of a public servant, and it is in the best interest of the people to decide which candidate is in our best interest and not council's. Thanks.
Mayor and council members, that was the last call.
That actually reminded me, I know we received a note on Ms. Khanchan not being able to serve after she was selected. Was that part of the process today? Clean that up, okay, all right, thank you.
One, one other item, I, with respect to Ms. Kojoina, CSW, we believe she's termed out.
And I apologize, I was, I asked staff, and I was told that.
Yeah, I think that was, she was originally not termed out, but she completed her second term from the last, from the time we started this process to now.
So I will have to go back, and there's, I think, a couple of names, and I think that was Councilmember Najarian's in my panel, and we'll figure something out. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Sure.
We honor that April 15 is coming, and I don't want to have, I hope we won't have the same kind of a meeting as last year. We never had an issue in selecting a mayor all these years that I've been around since 2001. It was, it was always known as to who the mayor is going to be without violating the Brown Act, and the families came that brought flowers, the mayor-to-be was always made, you know, had a statement to make, and, and it was a happy night. So, but this ordinance was put in place for some reasons. I went back and watched the, the meeting as, you know, several meetings that this ordinance was approved in 2021. And I expect that my colleagues will honor the spirit of this ordinance and the main reasons that this ordinance was approved. To have clarity, transparency, and clean process as to who the next mayor is going to be. To stop backdoor dealings, these are the exact words that were, that were made. To stop horse trading, to take politics and corruption that comes with it out of process of selecting a mayor. To me, the ordinance is very clear. After Mr. Kasakian, I'm next in line to be the mayor. I expect my colleagues to follow the ordinance the same way that they did in 2021 for Paula Devine, council member and former mayor Paula Devine, 2022, Mr. Kasakian, and 2023, council member and former mayor Dan Brotman, because they were next in line. We also saw what happened last year when the council used the best interests of the city, city clause. I don't want that to happen again this year in these chambers. To me, it was the lowest point that the city has ever had. But let me tell you about the shoe that I have in, a stone that I have in my shoe. Since Mr. Kasakian has issued an open letter indicating that he does not wish to become the mayor this year, and because the way the ordinance is written and approved in 2021, Mr. Kasakian would be automatically first in line to serve as mayor again in 2026, 2027. The following year, 2027, 2028, will be the last year of my four-year term. Based on the ordinance, no council member shall be selected to serve as mayor in the last year of his or her four-year term. Basically prohibits the council member to serve as a mayor in the last year. That is the issue that I have. I'd like to have the honor of serving the city that I love within my four-year term. Once again, I'm disappointed in what happened last year, but I was not here. I'm not responsible for what happened, and I hope my colleagues will not unfairly penalize me for that by taking the opportunity to become the mayor this year, or in my four years. We still have two weeks to go until the reorganization day, and I strongly urge my colleagues, my creative colleagues, to come up with an idea to have a professional, civil, fair, mayoral selection meeting that our community deserves. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or clarification points? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Can you hear you?
Pardon?
You were saying something.
Next item.
Next item would be oral communication. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager, mayor for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I have three cards for this item, and no callers. Number one is Rafik Babachanian. Rafik, you have five minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, council, madam mayor. My name is Rafik Kerbavyan. I'll be interpreting tonight, this evening, for Mr. Babachanian. I, Rafik Babachanian, for over a year and a half, have addressed my complaint before Madam Mayor Asatriyan and council members. One more time, I, Rafik Babachanian, a senior citizen, am here to express the, the very same complaint for which I've been singing the same tune for a period of a year and a half to your deaf ears. for a period of a year and a half to your deaf ears. You, Madam Mayor Asatriyan, and I repeat, you have indirectly destroyed, and I repeat, you have indirectly destroyed the safety and well-being of my family. Please forgive me for my assumption that you, Madam Mayor, with your decision, you gave priority to the requests of few people by allowing the installment of a stop sign at 1255 South Adams Street, right in front of a private residence, ignoring the basic well-being and safety of my family members and depreciating the value of my property. As a handicapped citizen, it has been very challenging and dangerous for me to cross the street or to back up from my driveway and jeopardize the movement of my family members. Who is responsible for all these impediments and discomfort? The decision made on November 19, 2024, regarding installing a stop sign at the intersection of Adams and Schofield falls short in terms of legal standards. The petition, which carried just a few signatures of unknown individuals, is baseless. For over a century, the traffic on the mentioned street has not needed any projects of reconstruction. Hence, by installing a stop sign, the safety and normal flow of traffic has been disturbed. My previous complaints, both oral and written, in order to withdraw or review your decision to move the sign to another spot or to consider other developmental alternatives have fallen on deaf ears and remain unanswered to this day. Going forward, driven by the power of your authority and position, you, Madam Mayor, did have the sign installed.
Can you stop the clock for one second? There's clearly statements that are being made here that are not correct when it comes to what the process is. I was not, the mayor in Glendale cannot make a decision on their own. This council as a whole voted for this project. So, can I, is there a way that we can clarify this for the speaker as he continues his remarks? Because, I mean, he's directing all of the comments at me and, as the mayor, like, you don't, I don't know how many times I can say, you don't, you know, I don't know why he's under the impression that I...
I understand, my recommendation would be to let him complete his time, and then you or the staff can respond to the inaccuracies that you feel are in the state.
All right, continue.
Continue. Going forward, driven by the power of your authority and position, you, Madam Mayor, did have the sign installed. I ask you, why did you violate the rules related to putting up that sign? Instead of the 15-foot by 20-foot safety zone, you went ahead and decided to have the sidewalk painted red 34 feet before and 34 feet past the stop sign. Based on whose initial complaint or suggestion was that project launched, what does 76.7% mean, after all? What's the idea of .7? Is that a seventh of a person? Could it be, I wonder, that the few signatures of homeowners or tenants or callers to support installers of double rumbles, which, by the way, were removed right afterwards? Please, give me the chance and opportunity to work my way in undoing what was done and finally having the stop sign removed to benefit the public in general. Here's a rhetorical question. Mr. Najarian, Mr. Kasakian, and Mr. Brotman, for over two decades of having the authority of Glendale Council, have you ever showed interest or been curious about the solution related to the traffic conditions on the mentioned street? I hence appeal to Mr. Najarian, Mr. Brotman, to please sit with me for a private meeting. Thank you, respectfully, Rafik Babahanyan. Please allow me, council members, and sorry if I mentioned some vocabularies or statements, but I would like to add a few pages printouts of, as evidence of individuals who do not even live in the area.
Well, it's all in a language I don't understand.
I will translate, so...
There's no debate, please sit down. The mayor is just responding to your comments.
I'm gonna, I was, I'm gonna say it in English so everyone can understand what I said, but he has time and again come to the meetings noting that the mayor is the one that is making the decisions that are impacting his family. I corrected again that not only is that false because the mayor in the city of Glendale doesn't have the jurisdiction to do that, but he was present at the meeting. I have met with him after and passed on the information to our staff who have come back and noted and showed that the signatures that he provided are correct. I can't, there's nothing more that, that can be done on this aside from the additional directions we gave for staff to look at the handicap and the possibility of even moving that stop sign somewhere else. And so, there is something in the works, but I, I just, I do take offense to, by all means, if I've, you know, done something that was out of my jurisdiction, then please note that. But I really don't appreciate the, the comments that are directed at me that I had nothing to do with. I did not come and install a stop sign in front of your house, sir. Right, next.
Next would be Beth Brooks. Beth, you have five minutes.
I sure did. Welcome, Ms. Brooks. Thanks. First, I want to thank Mr. Garapetian for answering my, my email telling me there's a city council meeting today, just because I wasn't sure because it wasn't on the website. I also support his mayorship. I think he would be very fair and balanced, and I think that's what the city needs because we sometimes have a lot of partisanship. And I, and I would really be excited about him being mayor. I'm here, of course, I'm always talking about rent, but because I've also been dealing with my landlord since February 7th about an issue where I found out that my rent increases were illegal. So I'm dealing with trying to get a rent refund and a rent rollback, which I think I have, and now we're just at the NDA stage. But I, before I do that, I wanted to say, because I'm the one who spoke to Mr. Mohill about the city not duplicating efforts that can be done privately or spending money on, on things that can be handled privately or through the state or federal government. Because two weeks ago, when the afternoon, we had, there were budget discussions about so many things the city needed, and then at night, you know, the mayor asking for $36,000 for the, the commission for women, I felt like that was totally unfair. I rarely do, because I think that the city council has to be guided by two things. I think you have to be guided by have to have versus nice to have, number one. And number two, will this mon, can this money be, 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 be spent by private, state, or federal, you know, entities? And just in line with that, for women, if it's only the $5,000 grant, that's fine. I think that's, you know, that's, that's great. But you have the Girls Inc. of Los Angeles, YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena, Empower Her Institute, Right Girl, Peace Over Violence, Baby to Baby, Planned Parenthood, National Organization of Women, Los Angeles County Women and Girls Initiative, California Commission on the Status of Women, American Association of University Women, California Black Women's Health Project. There are a lot of places that can inspire and uplift young girls and women. And if it's a question of us spending $200,000, you know, I'd rather you get a lawyer for the rental rights program because that's really pretty much why I'm here. My whole issue is that that program has no teeth because it has no enforcement. You have building code compliance that has enforcement, but the rental rights program has no enforcement. So basically landlords, my landlord has lied to me, and I'm not a stupid person, and I know how to research. So this guy has tried to pull the wool over my eyes because he knows that the rental rights program just has somebody emailing him saying, please do right by this woman, as opposed to that you have a lawyer who you could pay if you had a rental registry for, you know, $200 an apartment. You also need a renters' commission. You need right to counsel, not to, I don't believe anybody has to pay my lawyer if I get evicted. I don't, I don't, I don't believe in that. I don't believe that the renters have more of a right for somebody to pay their lawyer. No, I think you need enforcement. And that can only be done according to the rental rights program people that I speak to with a lawyer. And I think you absolutely need that. I think what I've experienced, I've had a landlord tell me an east stop was the same as a lease. So because of his lease violation, he didn't owe me any money. I had him tell me that I need to sign an NDA, which I don't have to if there's just a straight violation of housing ordinance. He told me that NDAs are almost always vague in general. That was a good one. That's like, am I a moron? He told me they don't owe me any money because there was a previous owner, which is true, they sold the property, and that they're not responsible for the mistakes of the previous owner, which is untrue. So, I'm, I'm basically, you can't get legal advice from a non-lawyer. I, I, I understand that, but people, people need help, and I'm here to implore you to please have a, hire a lawyer for that program, beef up that, that department, have a rental registry as cheap as possible so at least you can have some money for that lawyer, and a renters' commission. Please, people need help because I have yet to send out my thousands of flyers because I'm still waiting from the city for the addresses of all the apartment buildings in Glendale, which is taking my second public records request. Please, people, people need help. Please, thank you very much.
And I have one more, Glendale Yimby.
Hello, city council. Mayor, I have a quick question. I was late to the community event announcement. Can I use 20 seconds of this time to talk about a community event? Is that all right?
You have five minutes, sir, please.
Okay. On April 11th, Glendale Yimby, we're having a happy hour at Des Vilados in, it's like west Glendale. We have these happy hours every month. So if you're interested in housing and want to build more, you should come through. Also, first of all, I, I love stop signs, and I think they're great, and I do think they save lives, and I think we should have more of them, in fact. I also like the Commission on the Status of Women, I think that's cool, too. And if you have time, there's a really cool state law. It's AB 1033. It allows you to turn an ADU into a condo, like you can own it instead of just renting it. San Diego County passed it, and also, what is it, San Jose passed it. So if you want, if you want to talk with me so we can talk about that ordinance or that state law, you can opt into it. I think it'd be really great for Glendale. So I, if, I think you should look into it and maybe see if we can like have some hearings on it. And it'd be great if we could put it on the agenda sometime. I just want to say that. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Mayor, that is all. No callers and no more cards.
Three different items, so I don't know.
Okay, three different items, all right. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Ahani, I'm sorry, Anahi Godinez et al. versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 23BDCV00684 in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $30,000. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to the plaintiff by defendant. for any wrongdoing with respect to the plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is the compromise of a disputed claim.
Second.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatriyan?
Yes.
Next.
All right. I'd like to move that the city council hereby waives its attorney-client attorney-client and confidentiality privileges as to only the fact of the aggregate amount spent in Najarian versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 24STCP 02101 as of April 1st, 2025.
Second.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Asatriyan?
Yes.
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Eric David Sanchez versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 23 GDCV 00701 in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $50,000. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is the compromise of a disputed claim.
All right. Real call.
Second.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatriyan?
Yes. Next.
All right. I would like to move that we adjourn in solemn remembrance of Sergeant Edvin Franco. May he rest in peace.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.